Has kind of wavered back and forth between less fees to encourage more growth and less mitigation to more to discourage growth. You know, it was when I was mayor, we actually did downzone the larger kind of non-conforming, non-traditional lots to say, you know, if you want to go to a larger home size, you have to have a TDR. But then the following council reversed that. So there was going to be more integration so that the impacts within city growth were really taking care of other areas that create value and are used by all of our residents around here. But just aside from that, I think that if you also talk about the below grade floor area in unison with those three things, you really of lower initial allotment, sliding scale on TDRs, and then again.
That scared me.
Where's that coming from?
So anyhow, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
So I'm sorry, I kind of lost that last. Are you saying below grade, address that, not specifically how, but just address it?
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, if you integrate those three, how much below grade you're allowed to begin with, and do you need a TDR to go to a bigger below grade, the overall 57? Because when I look at 5750, it's like 5750 plus, 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 you know, and it doesn't need to be that. So these homes that we're sitting here calling 15,000 are really closer to 20,000 by the time you've exempted garages and below grade and things like that. I mean, maybe I'm, that's only within the UGB, but yeah.
Yeah, there are a lot of variations on that, but it is a 15,000 square foot cap of gross floor area, which does include that below grade and garage. So maybe that's the simplest clarification to make for now.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
I throw guest houses into the mix, too, when I talk about needing TDRs. I forgot that point.
Other thoughts or comments?
Just to follow up on that as well, Cindy, in your introduction, you, I think, said the number where there's kind of a tipping point where the impacts based on the square footage of the house size really are more impactful. And, you know, kind of adopting a tweak to the TDR program along the lines of what Rachel said about the sliding scale would seem to be, you know, there's a good connection there between one of the community goals of, you know, reducing impacts and, you know, creating a demand for these TDRs. So what was that number again? I can't remember it.
Well, the number that I think you're referring to is the 7,500 square feet when we look at energy demand.
Okay, energy demand, okay.
But tagging on to that, what happens at 9,500 square feet? I mean, there's got to be an exponential growth in that energy demand. So there's a cutoff between 7,500 and less, but I'd like to see that slope for above because that's a point that I had.
Is that something that we can get from core?
No. Rachel had at our last session asked us to dive into that a little bit more deeply in terms of the comparison between, say, a 10,000 and 12,000 or 15,000 square foot house. And we have a pretty limited study right now. And talking with August Haas, who was our energy consultant, he would like to see more data points as we go further. He'd like to do a broader study to really shore up what we've looked at with a smaller study. But basically, we were looking at 73 K BTUs per two square feet per year. So, you know, you just do the multiplication on it. But I think that we're pretty, we feel pretty secure that saying that the energy consumption goes up at the 7,500 square foot mark, we're pretty secure in that at this point. But to actually fine tune it to say how much, but once you go beyond that, are we looking at? We'd really need to have a broader study than we have today.
Well, and Jim Fashansi, again, I can tell you as a builder empirically why you're seeing that huge energy usage, because when you get much bigger than that, you get swimming pools, you get home theaters, you get whole house air conditioning, you get humidity control. What I, well, yeah, a lot more snow melt. In a typical 5750 home, they don't put those things in. There's not enough home to put those things in. And somebody who's building a smaller home doesn't usually care if it has whole house air conditioning. Somebody building a smaller home doesn't care if you can get the humidity level to the same level as it is in Houston. I've had clients who wanted that. So it makes sense that there's a huge jump in the energy usage because there's a huge change in the character of what you're building when you get much bigger than that.
So Greg, then Paul.
So what Jim's saying is it's not based on square footage as much or on number of inhabitants, but it's on the various amenities that they demand in a house that size. I would love to just see us move down to where we don't have any X's here. Look at our stronger energy code, net zero goals that we've discussed. We've bandied that around. And I know that sounds like maybe it's scary to bring it up, but we know there are so many thousands of net zero buildings in the world today. Why can't we set some ambitious goals and start working toward that? And I'd love to have the conversation move a little bit more in that direction. And then regarding prioritizing green, small building energy permits, that seems like that's a no-brainer for me. And I'd love to see what you all think about moving in that direction. And perhaps it's a radical notion, but if we're going to be serious, that's the direction we need to move.
Paul?
I was just going to say that scheduling the issuance of building permits is something we discussed in my prior iteration on P&amp;Z. And I think the P&amp;Z at that time was in favor of it generally. I don't think it went anywhere, but that has a lot of impacts. It impacts traffic substantially, impacts quality of life in the neighborhoods. If you did a caucus area by caucus area and you limited one or two or three building permits, exempting small remodels or things like that. But if you've limited the number of building permits that can be issued in a year, I think it has a number of positive impacts.
Jim, did you?
Lost my train of thought. Oh, oh.
The builder didn't like that idea.
Actually, I wasn't even thinking about what you were saying. I was thinking about what I was going to say. We have, we have ramp fees to mitigate the impact of energy usage. Do we have transportation mitigation fees, impact fees, stuff like that?
Yes. Yes, it's based on house size.
Yeah. Because every big house that gets built here, the traffic gets worse and worse.
We exempt houses under 5750 or five. Oh, I'm sorry, that's housing impact fee.
Or road impact fees?
The road impact fee.
It's a sliding scale by some sides.
Well, and what I'm referring to is more than just a road impact fee, to, you know, bring the roads back to where they were after all the heavy equipment damages them. We need better public mass transportation here to stop the huge line of traffic coming into town every morning.
I think we do as part of our construction management plans, though. It incentivize or require transportation issues to and from the job sites, like van pooling, et cetera, mostly because we don't have parking on county roads. So I think that, isn't that part of our construction management?
Yes, but I'm not talking about construction impact. I'm talking about permanent impact.
Oh, like, that's a hard one to qualify, how many service workers come and go from home? I think we've tried to do that in the past. We can ask Mick Ireland, he's got lots of data on that.
If I'm hearing you right, you're talking about an expansion of the road impact fee to help pay for public transportation.
He wants it for long-term use, coming and going traffic that's generated by that house.
Let's say we want light rail from the airport into town to stop people from driving cars.
Don't bring that up in this.
That's a whole different discussion.
I know, I know. It's just a for instance.
And there's limitations in state constitution as to how and what we can charge for transportation impact. So it's not as if we're out there on our own. There's, it's much more concise and limited, but I empathize with the concerns you're bringing up. You know, I was just going to say, this scheduling issuance of building permits to manage impacts is a very interesting one to me on a couple of counts. You know, if you go back to 2008, when the economy crashed and we had so much unemployment in the construction trades and others, we voluntarily extended people's building permits for a year rather than let them expire to try to help, and the vesting, to help their, the economy and to help those folks. And now we're in 2017, looking at the boom happening. And so part of, I think that philosophy should be a little, how do we get away from the boom and the bust? How do we get away from trying to readjust to market forces, which seems to be a big part of this, and have something that has some consistency going forward? I always have a challenge with the scheduling of building permits to manage impacts, just because it means that one person can get to go this year and you get 3.5% interest, and you are not going to get to go till next year and you're going to get 4.5% interest. And yet they are both legal lots, you know? And so how do you really create some equity or fairness in that? And, you know, again, with the vestings only three years, so someone can hold off a little bit there to applying for their building permit until the conditions are more favorable. But I'll tell you, we heard a lot of really bad hard luck stories of people who came in and lost their financing and were just trying to build their family home in an old snow mask or something like that. And so I just, I just want to bring that back, that we're managing for a time period, you know, and I want to manage for long term.
So we have, Ellen, you put together 13 different land use approaches, and there certainly could be several more.
Absolutely, yes.
And we could throw them out as ideas, but given the time that we have here, I just wonder if we can just identify maybe the top three or four that we may be able to have a consensus on, that we can then direct staff to be able to, and bring back to the P&amp;Z, to do a little more work on those. Because otherwise, we really don't have the time to delve into. But we could identify just, you know, three, four, a handful of where we think are the top priorities that will give us, that will best address our overall goals. That may be a starting point. Patty?
I could say, for me, it's definitely the lowering the GS, the allotment for GMQS. Rachel's points about below grade floor area, the TDR use, I think is a good one. And probably the sliding scale for house size is greater than X. I'm not sure what we would determine that to be, but I think those are probably three. I think, and then at the bottom of the page, the last two, as Greg said, we're already working on our energy code, so that one's right there. And then I would really like to see some prioritization for small and green building permits.
Can, I don't know, do we have another sheet for flip chart just to jot these down so people can remember?
I thought there was one here. I apologize, I thought one was set up here.
Can we just use the backside of that one, or can you?
Yes.
Is there a way, otherwise we'll forget.
Somebody keep in track, and you can read them back to us? John, you keeping track, you mean?
I'm taking notes, I just.
So again, so Patty, because I've already lost your.
Sliding scale for TDRs for increased house size.
Sliding.
TDRs for below grade and lowering the GMQS exemption for the total allocations.
Lowering GM.
But you might want to combine that with the, also lowering the GS, the amount you can get through GMQS. So that one could probably be tied into one.
I would agree with those three, and I also would add as a fourth, if you talked about the four or five most important, is TDRs for upzoning. I think that that would be a consideration I would put forward. I'm less concerned, less interested in the special events permit one, because that seems like creating a permanent impact in somebody's neighborhood, that you're going to get a special event center, and how many more events can you do a year than you can do now? That might be a real impact into the rural area. So I'm hesitant. Some of these, as I said before, I'd love to look at some thoughtful pros and cons of them. And so that one seems to me to have a little more of a potential con on the TDRs for special events than you. The other one is the commercial and tourist accommodations. I just, you know, you constantly hear about how can you get affordable accommodations in the Aspen area? I don't know if the cost would just be something the market would bear, or it would be something that would assure that we only have top tier, you know, five-star accommodation applications coming forward that can pay for it all. I don't know how many we'd even get. We heard it became too difficult for the Inn at Aspen to redevelop into any sort of new accommodations. And so I'm just less sure about that.
And of course, we're much, much more limited in terms of commercial and tourist accommodations.
Those would actually be of any benefit, yeah.
Yeah, in Picking County. So I would, I would say, I would agree with Patty in terms of the, look at developing a sliding scale. And I agree with you, Patty, we could, TDR below grade, I think we could accomplish that by lowering the GM exemption, because that would tie in with that.
Yeah, and the allocations would tie in with those, too, I think.
And then for me, it just makes sense to lower the maximum house size as well.
I'm not disagreeing with that, George, but it's just such a broad title. If we're still trying to think about how do we keep the program balanced and use up the TDRs, is it the lower the maximum house size in accordance with caucus plans or where? You know, is it, you know, so that one's just a little too vague for me to know what they really mean by that.
But Rachel, you were for lowering GMQS allocations and all.
But I mean, if you're talking about lowering the maximum house size from 5750 to 4,000, that's one thing. I just, as I said, the title is just a little too vague for me to know exactly what we're saying.
Right, but what I mean is if we lower the GM exemption, or even we keep it the same, by using a sliding scale for TDRs, you could still maintain the credibility and validity of the TDR program, but you don't need to go to 15,000 square feet. You can go to under 10. Under 10 and still do that. And in regards to the caucus areas, as I said, three caucus areas have already limited, which has been codified. So this is more of a, this is more of an overview umbrella.
So you're hitting three of these. You're hitting the develop the sliding scale. So basically, you'd be using more TDRs for each incremental size you go up. You're also saying lower the exemption in growth management from 5750 to 4750, I think is what you said. And then I think you're saying lower the maximum house size to 10?
Well, for me, it would be under 10.
Or the cap.
You tap it at 10 or whatever.
Okay. So those are three that George has packaged. So I guess.
Counts as one.
Okay. So I've just, I just starred those, and I don't know.
Yeah, I did, GMQS exemption, the maximum amount, I didn't have a number other than 5750, I'm fine with that. George wanted to go lower. And reducing the available GM location, those mental allocations, kind of tied in to me as one and the same. That's an issue we could pursue at the same time.
And then Rachel's, you captured Rachel's?
Yeah, I think they did.
I'm sorry, yours was the TDR tourist, I got that one.
Yeah, mine was, well, that was one I wasn't less sure of. Some of these really need some pros and cons on it, and that's what we're talking about further analysis. But sliding scale, TDR below grade, lower GMQS exemption, and, you know, possibly reduce availability of GMQS allocations. And I'll look at lower house size as well, but I'm not sure what that number would be or in what areas.
Right. Jim?
I would like to ask what you think you're accomplishing by requiring additional TDRs for below grade, more TDRs? Because it seems to me that if I want to build a 15,000 square foot house and I have to buy five TDRs instead of two TDRs, I'm going to do it. And trust me, I work, my clients do stuff like this. I have a client who paid $70,000 for a bathtub. They don't care what a TDR costs. They don't care how many TDRs they have to have. And if you look at market forces, if we double or triple the number of TDRs that are required to build a house of 15,000 square feet, the value of the TDRs goes down, maybe. And then people who exchange their development rights for a TDR, maybe less willing to do it. If I'm only, if I have property in the rural area and I can get $150,000 for a TDR, I may say, great, I'm going to take that. But what if I can only get 75,000? I may not be willing to make that trade. So I'm not sure that increasing the number of TDRs that's required to build one of these big homes is really the solution to the problem.
I think it's the reverse. The TDRs are used up faster, they're going to go up in demand, up, up in price, not down in price.
I think those are areas for deeper discussion, once we pick out the areas we're going to discuss, because we're never going to get to the top choices the way we're going now, guys, because we have like five minutes or less.
But Steve, and then Greg?
I think I like the idea of reducing the GM exemption to like 4,000. I would keep the TDR value at 2,500 square feet per each. I don't really like the sliding scale idea, but I think I would maybe put a maximum number of TDRs that could be used by someone to gain 2,500 square feet on each increment. That would be the way we would reduce the total house size to, you know, if we allow them to have three TDRs, then they'd have an 11,500 square foot house. And maybe that would be the new maximum. Or if we allowed four TDRs, then they'd have 13,000 something. So that'd be my personal preference. Some of the things like the TDRs for commercial and tourist accommodations, by requiring anybody to buy a TDR, it's benefiting whoever owns the TDR, which the community gets some benefit from that. But in terms of commercial and tourist accommodations, what the community really needs is for the mitigation for the number of employees who are working there, which we need money for the housing program. So I requiring, instead of buying a TDR, they should be putting money into the affordable housing program.
They have to anyway.
Something.
But we've talked about increasing it, and we haven't done it.
No, it's not going to happen.
And some of the other things that we might want to rather have a payment in, a payment to the county for mitigation of the problems, instead of buying a TDR, and I haven't gone through the whole list, but some of those other items, perhaps that would be a better way to, a better requirement than buying a TDR.
Any other ones of those you want to support?
Well, my proposal would lower the maximum house size, it would depend on how many TDRs you give. For below grade area, I've always thought that the county should allow people in the rural areas to get so much below grade, because if you put stuff below grade, it's less, you know, reduces visibility issue to the community. The house looks smaller because more of the house is underground, and it should be more energy efficient.
But then all the dirt goes to landfill, that's our concern.
Having an earth home, you know, more buried in the earth should be more energy efficient. So whether to even require a TDR to do subgrade space, I'm not sure I even agree with that. Just let everybody have a certain amount of subgrade space as part of it, because that's hiding more of the home down underground.
In addition to the maximum house size? Not counting against the maximum?
That I don't know, I haven't sorted that through in my head yet.
And again, part of this is in UGB and some of it's not. And so that's where there's a differentiation that I guess when I'm talking about below grade TDRs, I'm talking about UGB properties that currently are exempt.
Greg?
Just thank you for doing this. I want to have an economic analysis of every one of these tools, because they're all, it's complicated, it's very complicated. I'm hearing what everyone is saying here. I appreciate the discussion, the TDRs right here. I was on with George and Rachel, and then Jim, when he brought up scheduling, it reminds me of demand metering for electricity. I was thinking it's something that Mona is probably an expert in, is that you can, you buy and sell according to demand when it's power production. And I'm just thinking that maybe there's a building, an analogy with building permits, we should study and understand with, whether it's demand metering, demand scheduling, this might be a way to help solve a problem where we have this intense congestion and overcrowding. You're hearing it from the caucuses. I think we should explore that. It's different from the TDR question, which I like that about it. Then regarding the TDRs, I liked Georgia's package. I'm concerned about the underground, because if you have to mitigate for radon, or you decide you want climate control, we think about the underground being energy efficient, but it's possible that could be moot, you know, if somebody's going to put in a tennis court that needs to be ventilated, or a swimming pool, or both, you know, so.
The underground basketball court on the fourth.
Basketball court, right. You hear about the underground pool rooms that need to be ventilated and heated and dehumidified, and all of a sudden, it's an energy pig, even though it's underground. So it's a bit complicated to, that's all I can say, but I'd like to really look at the scheduling, the demand scheduling. Maybe we can help even out the boom and bust cycle with that.
Jeff?
So, you know, I think, you know, there's a few different things going on here, and with the tweaks to the TDR system, that's kind of one prong of accomplishing these larger community goals, addressing impacts related to construction scheduling is kind of one other component of that. And then, you know, adjusting the land use code to make it a stronger energy code, that's kind of a separate component of that. But so if we're talking within the TDR program itself, I think it's, I would agree with most of the comments, that all of these ideas are worth further analysis and discussion. But if we're within the TDR program, trying to pick just three ideas that make sense in light of that discussion, I think the sliding scale idea really gets at this notion that the energy impact associated with a home size, it's not a flat line, but it is an increasing slope. And there are a number of reasons for that, as Jim pointed out, several of them. So I do like that idea. Tweaking the GMQS system related to how square footage is allocated, and even if, tweaking the scoring system, if that is, you know, again, this is within the TDR, GMQS area, that's, I guess those are my two ones I'd like to place a check next to.
Again, I'm going to just clarify, too. I think that the lowering the GMQS exemption number from 5750 to whatever goes hand in hand with the allotments for GMQS. I don't want to lose that part of it. I think everybody's kind of talked about that at the same time, it's just not getting as many check marks.
Monty, what do you think?
I'm counting.
Just kind of listening to it all, you know, I think that, you could say it's a pretty complicated thing. You know, as far as the 5750 and reducing that down, you know, I just thought that was a really good number as a builder, because when you, the garage is counted in, your mechanical rooms are counted in, it's pretty, you can eat up 5750 pretty quick. And, you know, that's not an enormous house for any place, you know, not just in Picking County. But with the TDRs, you know, they have, they've had a great effect on the county, you know, really got a lot of stuff from them. So, you know, these ideas to try to use them better and more efficiently, I think are really good. In the day, I think just really break it down to see which ones really are the most impacted for you. You know, like you say, with a little bit more research and stuff, and then come back and do something about it. But I really think the 5750, you know, that's been in a place for a long time. And I think, I actually think that's a good size for a house in our, especially in rural areas, you know?
There's not many of those houses in my rural area.
What's that?
There's not many houses that's that large in my rural area.
Well, but that's your rural area, but there's still rural areas around, and, you know, there's big households. When you take, you know, you know, if I'm, two people living in the house, yeah, that's true. But if I have a family and I want my kids to have their own bedrooms and stuff like that, you'd just be surprised as a builder how fast you can eat up 5750, you know, or a.
Yeah, I haven't heard, Joe, what, top three or four?
760.
Well, I guess, yeah, there's a couple. Well, I guess, yeah, there's a couple of my top ones that would be in there, but.
A microphone.
Okay, Joe Craig back there.
So I think we need to have a more, more discussion on the whole TDR program and how that works, and whether, what the trade off is between continuing to preserve the back country properties versus the thousand square foot cabins, versus where you, where I would like to see, and we really haven't discussed much, is the whole ag program and preserving the big ranches, which are the ones that are, you know, have the potential to cause a lot of development in the future, if there's not a way to preserve them. So, you know, I'm open to discussing any of the other items that are on the list, and I think some of them are very intertwined with the, with the TDR program. But just going down the list, top three would probably be, I'd like to understand a little bit more about our energy code and how we can use that. Seems to be a more direct way to get at the climate control issues. And whereas some of the other ones are a little more indirect, in terms of reducing house sizes as kind of a proxy for that. I think it's going to be tough politically to lower the 5750, but I'm open to looking at that. As you mentioned, there's a number of caucuses who've gone down from the 15,000, and that may be more of a caucus by caucus approach on those.
So that's house size in general.
That's house size in general, yeah. And, but, you know, I think that, I don't know, I'm open to the, like I say, any of the other ones. I think that the, you know, the underlying problem, and I said it somewhat facetiously, is that, you know, our overall maximum densities, if you want to, if you want to incentivize people to use TDRs, it's pretty big already. And so maybe the other one is, you know, maybe we shouldn't have a 15,000 square foot max in the rural area, however you get to it. Maybe it does come down to 10 or something else. So those are just a quick summary of my comments.
Can I just, real quick though, Joe? Question being then too, with Georgia's idea of reducing the GMQS exemption of, so you can only get X amount of square feet through GMQS, then can people still add TDRs so they can still get to that house size issue? You're saying it's not, you only get to do GMQS or TDRs, since you only get so much through GMQS, the rest has to go through TDR. Just wanted to clarify that.
Right, yeah. So I think that, I thought I understood that right, that basically you're saying, if you want to get up to 5750, you got to be ITDR. Otherwise, it's 4,000, or it's 4750, or it's 3,500, or whatever.
I agree with that.
Depending on what area it is.
Yeah. Just a couple of comments from your thoughts. In terms of the ranches, you know, conservation easements, we've had that discussion with open space in the past, and we, in the past, we've actually utilized some TDRs in conjunction with open space funds. But it's been more of a policy now to not utilize TDRs for that purpose, but to fully utilize the open space funds to accomplish.
Oh, to just.
To accomplish those goals.
Buy downs.
Right, to buy down.
It's still a discussion we're having.
Yeah, but that's.
There's still code that allows you to apply for TDRs.
And then the other, the other uses for the TDRs that we're finding uses, are being utilized for, certainly for constrained lots, where we're negotiating with people, and also for historic properties as well. So we're finding other avenues for that as well.
It looked like actually about 40% of the TDRs that have been generated have come from other than rural.
Right, right. Jim, and then maybe, Jim?
Yeah. Jim Vaschanti again. I just wanted to comment on the lowering the maximum size from 5750, and also on the growth management allocations. From my four or five years of experience now on P&amp;Z and my experience in the building industry, it seems that those changes would have a disproportionate impact on locals, on full-time residents. We don't get a lot of growth management applications. We don't use the allocations we've got now, because those who can afford it go the TDR route. So the growth management applications, the GMQS applications, tend to come more from, you know, full-time residents, people who can't afford to buy a TDR.
Know if that's true or not.
But it's worth investigating, I think.
Yeah, but that, yeah, that would be an interesting thing to find out, because the last one that we had was not from a local.
Okay.
So, but that's an interesting thing I've never listened to.
But you would agree that we don't get a lot of applications, and we rarely use the entire allocation.
That's why I want to prioritize small building permits.
Okay. And then on the 5750, I mean, I'm not saying that every local can build a house that big, but if you were to go down to 4,000, then I think to Monty's point, you're starting to impact, you know, people who live here full time and have three or four kids, if you drop it to 4,000. And I don't think that's what we want to control. That's not our biggest problem.
Okay. Paul?
And also, Monty, I don't know what your experience is, but I don't build many 5750 houses. They're mostly three or 4,000 square feet, or they're 10,000 square feet.
I just think it's, I thought it was a good number. Again, when you.
Closer to the microphone, please.
When you go, if you went to 4,000 or that, and you take, you know, 700 out for a garage, and, you know, mechanical rooms still have to be a pretty good size, it just, I just think that eats it up pretty good. But I also thought the sliding scale thing was good, because, you know, that really does impact, you know, using up the TDRs and things like that.
Paul?
Well, I agree with Jim and Monty on the, on the 5750 retaining that. I agree with, I think it was George, that GMQS can get up to 5750, but not above, and TDRs are required if you're going to go further. I would think that TDRs for converting guest houses, or converting caretaker houses to guest houses is a no-brainer. I, we haven't really talked about that. Special events is probably a minimal impact. I'm, would be inclined to agree that TDR values should be on a sliding scale, starting at 2,500 and going down as more are utilized. Below grade, I think that's got to really be looked at by people who are much more knowledgeable than I am about what the below grade space can be used for. And I still like the idea of, notwithstanding Rachel's comments, which are good, of limiting the number of building permits per area, and perhaps with some discretion or leeway, if you hit a drought period and to accommodate the economic cycles. Would also presumably ease up the workload of the planning and development department.
No. I'm not a big fan of limiting permits, but I'm open to further discussion, because we've discussed it over the years for a long time, and I've never found a reason that I'm totally supportive of it. Doesn't mean that somebody at this table can't change my mind.
Rachel?
Yeah, I was just going to note that these are all intricately interwoven. And so discussions about lowering the GMQS exemption, if you just went to a 4750, and then the first TDR you buy is 2,500, you're kind of starting to force people into building a 7,000 square foot home.
We have to discuss those numbers.
And so, you know, there is that inner relatedness that's very clear, that has to be looked at. So this may also be a strange thing for staff to consider, but it might be helpful for all of us, if there'd be a way of working through the Board of Realtors for some homes that are already listed, to do some site visits, and get a sense of what a 5750 home is like, plus it's square footage. I mean, I, that's the thing, I think a lot of us are all talking about conceptually, a few people at the table have more experience. You know, it'd be nice to see how much space a mechanical takes up, or how, how little or how big it can be. And so it may or may not be possible, but I think that it would be great to look at some hardwood examples.
If we could see a basement basketball court on that tour, it'd be great.
We could go over to the Limelight Hotel to see that one.
You need a very high ceiling.
Yeah, I mean, the city had to prohibit going down four stories after one application.
Let's see, Steve?
If we really want to reduce house sizes, I would reconsider doing fractional TDRs for one half only, not one quarter or one tenth or something. So one half TDR would be good for 1,250 square feet. Some people, that's what they want to build. They don't, if they, if they get 2,500, they feel like they have to build 2,500 extra. And maybe they only want to build, you know, something a little over 6,000 square feet or something. That would give them a mechanism to do it. So we'd see more houses that aren't quite as big being built.
It just, right, it creates a nightmare for administration, so.
I don't think it would be a nightmare for half TDR, for a half TDR.
I think what it does is it starts.
If you go down into like the city of Aspen does for 100 square feet or, you know.
I look at it as parking. If I have to pay for a half hour parking, but I'm only there for 15 minutes, they get to keep the other 15 minutes, you know. Yeah, I'm okay with that. You know, I just, I think you would end up creating more growth everywhere, rather than people leaving a few square feet on the table every now and then.
It looks like that we've got at least one, two, three, four, at least five that has a pretty good support, or at least priorities. And that will probably give you guys enough work to keep you busy for a little bit. But I would, as staff is looking at this and bringing it back to P&amp;Z, I would encourage you again, just to look at this, these top boxes, because I think our overall goal is again, is as we are developing a climate action plan, trying to identify ways to do that through, through a new energy code, which we're working on, understanding where energy consumption is being used the most as home sizes become larger, and all these other impacts.
And George, that would tie in then to the prioritizing green, smaller home building permits.
Right. So this is, I think this is a good, some good information to sort of bring, bring those discussions back constantly, thinking about how are we addressing these top five boxes in terms of coming up with some ideas for changes in our land use and building codes? Because the energy codes are being worked on, or our climate action plan is being worked on, and as that gets developed, we'll send that over to you guys. So that will give you another tool to be able to better understand how to address some of these issues.
Well, and I would just, since I've spoken against some of those things, I'd like to say, please put two Xs for me in front of the last two.
Thank you.
They don't, they don't have enough Xs right now, and I'm fully supportive of those last two.
Right. Now, as I said, the energy codes, that's currently being worked on right now.
Right. And my last, sorry, my last comment on that was going to be that I kind of, you know, see the, except for the bottom three, all of those kind of fit within the TDR GMQS program, and then these other ones are kind of.
More random.
Separate approaches. And so within the TDR, you know, system, we have a lot of Xs. And then I would agree, though, that the bottom two as separate solutions should also be looked at.
Greg?
Just going to say, I think really what you take away from this is to consider everything with an X or more.
See, there's like only one in there.
The last thing I was going to say is that if we're going to look around, we're going to look at examples, so to get an idea, I'd like us to look further afield than just in our community. If we, if we're going to look for other, what other communities are doing with home size, what works with energy efficiency, let's look further afield, that's all. There's so much more out there than what we just have in our valley.
Did you guys just buy me a ticket somewhere?
Yeah. I'd just like to thank our P&amp;Z members for your.
Yeah, thank you guys. Thanks for coming.
Did it overwhelm you, or did we give you a little start?
I'm still in shock, but we'll take it and digest it and get back to you.
But that's exactly what we needed. Thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Thanks for coming in. Thanks, everybody.
Well, thanks, thank all you guys, and you guys are staying here for your regular P&amp;Z meeting, so, thanks again.
And to my board, I did have one thing to discuss in open discussion, which was, we'd already talked about it, which was the 50th anniversary of Ruger Fest. I can defer it to Tuesday.
To Tuesday, great, thank you.
I have the information I need.
Thank you, grassroots. We're done for the day.
Thanks.
Do I remember the first word?
All right, guys, have fun.